When the time comes, so yeah, at this point in the meeting, I'll call the meeting to order and take roll call from council. We're gonna start the meeting, go through the technical things at the beginning, and then item six will be the human resources presentation. Okay, really, who are we missing? Counselor Killam, are you here? And Counselor Allen, you're both here. Okay, perfect, thank you. Could I have a motion to excuse Mayor Matart, Counselor Hurdle, and Counselor Harding, who have given their regrets? Moved by Counselor Armstrong, seconded by Counselor Meisner. Discussion on the motion? Seeing none, all in favor or otherwise, please signify in the usual fashion. For those of you who may be new to council this morning, there's a 10-second delay between when the question is called or the motion is made and between when our votes actually register on the screen. Okay, six in favor, that's better. Thank you, council. Looking for a motion to approve the agenda that's in front of us this morning? Moved by Counselor Meisner, seconded by Counselor Davison, thank you. Discussion on the agenda, any additions, omissions, deletions? Seeing none, all in favor or otherwise, please signify in the usual fashion. At this point in time, while we wait for agenda to be approved, I'd ask council to review it and let me know if you have any conflict of interest issues you wish to disclose at this point in time. Oh, I am also in favor of the agenda. Yes, six in favor, unanimous. Conflict of interest from anyone on council this morning? Seeing none, approval of minutes of November 21st, 2023, they're in your package, could have a motion to approve? Moved by Counselor Meisner, seconded by Counselor Killam. Discussion on the minutes of November 21st. Errors or omissions? Seeing none, all in favor or otherwise, please signify now. And finally, before we get to our presentations, any business arising from those minutes? Anything folks wish to follow up on, raise? Okay, motion carries unanimously. Minutes are approved. So at this time, we're gonna move into the human resources awards, which is why you're all here. But before we start, I did just wanna say and recognize, it's been a very challenging year here at Kings County for a number of reasons. You'd never know it because when you come into the building and when I see folks around, everyone is generally smiling and being positive. But between the odor issues in New Minus and the cybersecurity incident and the regional sewer breaks that have happened this fall, everyone's working above and beyond and tirelessly to keep things running. I think the disruption to the public has been minimal, and it's because of you all. I think everyone deserves a service award this morning for being excellent. You've just, you've made us look good, which is a huge favor for us, so thank you. But truly, it is very, very, very important to recognize the hard work you guys, not just today, but all the time, the work that you guys put in and the way that you've handled some extraordinarily large challenges this year, so thank you. I'm gonna give the winner some round of applause. Oh, we can stand up. Yeah, we're gonna stand up, yeah. Okay, now we can start. So I'm gonna turn it over to Kathy to get us rolling, and you just let me know where I need to be, Kathy. Oh, and I should also note that Mayor Matart has sent his personal congratulations to everyone as well. Oh, Counselor Granger, welcome this morning. Go ahead, Kathy.
Okay, thank you, Deputy Lutz, and good morning, everyone in council and staff. And as the deputy mayor said, so great to see everybody here today to celebrate each other. I think it's a really important thing that we do every year. So we're gonna start today with our long service awards, and we'll have the deputy mayor come up and present them. And Joanna's going to assist, and I believe Ashley will be here to snap a few photos. So we'll start with our five-year service award, and our first recipient is Lily Ashdown. Lily is our records management specialist. So I've asked staff to, her coworkers, to say a few words to describe Lily, and the words that came to me were positive, creative, always giving good vibes, funny, and outgoing. So congratulations, Lily. Our next five-year service award goes to Sean Fevens. Sean's a recreation coordinator with the county. Sean, the words his coworkers used to describe him were authentic, inclusive, friendly, a great team member, and very kind person. Congratulations, Sean. Our next recipient is Daryl McDow, and I believe Daryl may have had an appointment this morning, and is not here. So Daryl's not here, but I still want to tell you a little bit about Daryl. Daryl, this is his, he'll be leaving us in January, and we've really appreciated his service with the county. Our CIO has coined a nickname for Daryl, Daryl's The Closer. The reason for that is the number of files he was able to close and give resolution to without tickets, without having to ticket. So it's very unique that also a bylaw enforcement officer would get a thank you letter from the public for assisting in demolition of their homes, so that's really tells how well he is working with the public, so we're really gonna miss Daryl. Our next five-year recipient is Chad West, our manager of IT, who is another person that had quite a trying year this year, so. So Chad's team described him as an amazing boss, empathetic, authentic, easygoing, and resourceful. Congratulations, Chad. Our next recipient is our deputy CIO, Rob Frost. Rob's team described him as kind, a principled leader, a mentor, approachable, a good listener, and best of all, majestic. Brittany Trainer, manager of community development, five-year service award. Brittany's staff described her as authentic, a change-maker, kind, helpful, and resourceful. Congratulations, Brittany. Dawn Bennett, I don't believe Dawn is here today. Dawn is a seasonal skilled laborer, would be receiving his 10 years of service, or sorry, five years of service award. Dawn's coworkers have described him as dedicated, diligent, dependable, hardworking, and friendly. So congratulations to Dawn. So we'll move along to our 10 years of service, and our first recipient is Nicole Gilbert, recreation coordinator. Nicole has an assistant helping her today. Addie's helping her? Nicole's coworkers described her as bringing a bright light and lightheartedness to the workplace, friendly, compassionate, authentic, and kind. Our next 10-year recipient is Dave Lord. Dave's a treatment plant operator in Greenwood. Dave's team describes him as diligent, passionate about his work, willing to help, dedicated, and friendly. Our next recipient for 10 years of service is Holly Sanford, GIS tech. Holly was described by her teammates as meticulous, trustworthy, intelligent, thorough, and knowledgeable. Congratulations, Holly. Paul Gray, engineering technologist, 10 years of service. Paul is described as exceeds expectations, dedicated, a team player, always willing to help, provides excellent customer service to internal and external customers. Congratulations, Paul. So 15 years of service, we have one recipient for 15 years of service, and congratulations to Monica Beaton, our geoinformatics specialist. Monica's team describes her as super friendly, dedicated, thorough, a great team member, hardworking, and knowledgeable. We also have one recipient for 20 years of service. It is Rob Creamer, treatment plant operator. Rob's team describes him as cheerful, knowledgeable, chatty, he's a great coworker, all-around good guy. And I also hear Rob is always humming a little ditty, and that can't help but to make his team smile. And 25 years of service is the one and only Dan Ketti. Dan, a network administrator, Dan's described as dependable, efficient, hardworking, a dedicated team member, and awesome. And believe it or not, we have someone with 35 years of service. Congratulations to Keith Frazier. Keith started when he was 10, right? Keith's team describes him as energetic, dedicated, awesome, hardworking, and very friendly. Congratulations, Keith. That's quite a milestone. Now we'll move into our excellence in public service. We've changed this up a bit. I think you may remember last year, we had little individual trophies for staff receiving this award, but we've decided to go a little greener and just have a plaque that we're going to put in the front entryway. And we've got the little plaques made for everybody since we started this program, and their names are already on it, and we'll have the recipients this year added to this year. So I'll tell you a little bit about this award, so the criteria for it. Extraordinary effort, continuous excellence, high degree of customer service, outstanding professionalism or competence, consistent and outstanding performance at work, implementation of innovative and practical new work methods, programs, or cost-saving solutions, heroism in response to an emergency situation, exceptional community volunteerism, and significant contribution to health and safety. So people that receive this award could fit all those categories or a few of those categories, and I must say, the recipients this year hit a lot of those categories. So we're very happy to present this award to our customer service representatives. Christina Evangelista, Leslie Malley, Suzanne Salwood, and Deanna Mahar. I'm just gonna take a minute here to read the nomination for the group. The customer service representatives, who we affectionately refer to as the CSRs, are the face of the municipality. Being the first point of contact is such an important role, as their first interaction can set the tone for future interactions with our residents. In eight short months together, they've melded as a team. Their positive attitude and humor benefits not only each other, but the entire organization. They are professional, courteous, when helping the municipality convey key information to the public. In good times and bad, they're tasked with remaining polite, courteous, compassionate, in difficult and emotional conversations. There have been days when the phones would ring back-to-back, all shift, and there would be voicemails and emails awaiting responses as well, but their dedication to outstanding customer service did not falter. They fielded questions from the cybersecurity incident, delayed tax billing, disruptions in financial services, late water bills, regional odor issues, trail closures due to sewer main breaks, all the while being excellent ambassadors to the municipality. Thank you all for all that you do. Congratulations, guys.
So that concludes our presentation this morning. Thank you all, and maybe if the group can gather at the back and Ashley can take a group picture, that would be great.
Yeah, we'll give you guys a couple minutes for photo and we'll move into the presentation in two or three minutes. Thanks everyone for coming this morning. Happy holidays. Have a good break. She's here. She's my friend, Mary. Yeah, she's here. Hi, Mary. Just wait for the doors to close and then we'll move on. All right, we're going to move along in the agenda this morning. We have Mary Hanneman with us today, who is the AVRCE Crisis Team Lead and Nova Scotia Fire Service Critical Incident Stress Management Team Critical Director, or Clinical Director, not Critical, very close. So Mary, come on up, you can come to the podium. And Mary is presenting this morning on responding to crisis in our community. As we know, crises are more and more common, so welcome, Mary.
Good morning, everyone, and thank you so much for the opportunity to come before you and chat about a very difficult topic, but I felt it was important. Emily and I had a couple of conversations over the course of the past few months, and so I feel very privileged to be able to stand before you today. As Emily said, I am Mary Hanneman, and I work 50% as a vice principal in our school system at Port Williams Elementary, which are all now still at home with the power outage. And I also work within the regional center and as the lead for the crisis response team. And I support school counselors, as I had been a school counselor for about 25 years in our system. So that's a little bit about that background. My background in crisis started probably 30 years ago, and I did a research paper on the effectiveness of critical incident stress debriefing. And shortly after that, was invited to be part of the newly-formed Critical Incident Stress Management Team as part of the Nova Scotia Volunteer Fire Service, which I know Councilor Davison is part of. And so through that work, over the course of the 30 years, I've had the opportunity and the privilege to serve in roles in, through working through Swissair, recently through Port-au-Prince, and certainly the fires in the South Shore, and as most recently, the floods in Hans County. The Hans County situation impacted us more in a large-scale event, more prominently in schools, and in that and through that response, that brought about. I'm not going to go into detail too much here, and am I doing this? Am I pressing the red button? Okay, and this is, you know, one of the pieces, when we think of emergencies, we think of, you know, the fire trucks and the ambulance and the police kind of coming, and those are the kind of immediate risk to life and property of which we respond to, whereas crisis has a much more overarching and it sometimes can begin prior to an actual emergency event and lasts much longer. And so those are the pieces that we're looking at, and when we do that, what we need to remember is that often, an emergency event attends to the physical aspect, life and safety, property. And when we think of an event, we need to be thinking, you know, even more globally in terms of how do we support our communities, our schools, with regards to the psychological impact. So I always work closely with our occupational health and safety officer, because they're driven by mandates through the government with occupational health and safety mandates. They often think through the physical lens, and George Thompson, who is our safety officer, we always kind of partner together to kind of go, there are, the psychological impact that we need to always be considering, and that's not always part of a larger piece of response, and so we're just, that's, I think, the role of our crisis team, is to kind of ensure that we provide that kind of service. And so one of the pieces, this is the quick kind of overview, when we look at it, we just don't look at what we're doing in the moment in terms of after something has happened. There's lots of work that happens with prevention, and in emergency management world, it's sometimes called mitigation, or sometimes there's split in two, preparation, response and recovery. And I'll talk a little bit about those, and just in terms of, I do not stand here before you proposing to be fully knowledgeable on EMO's practices. I think we are extraordinarily fortunate in our province to have such an incredible EMO response plan and team that deliver those services to our communities, and we are stronger for that. And so I don't want to speak for what they do, it's just kind of, just going to give you a little bit of insight about how schools fit into a response when it's in a community. So if I can just, and this, you're not going to be able to see, so I'll just kind of look, walk you through it a little bit. So when we think of prevention, and I'm going to look at it through each of the lenses, so from emergency management lens, and again, I want to quantify that, I do not have the expertise, but this is just some general knowledge that's, so under prevention, EMO will look at ways to prevent hazards from occurring, mitigating, good evacuation plans, environmental designs are kind of part of that mitigation-prevention piece. Preparation, they do lots of training with their teams, mutual aid agreements, information sharing on weather warnings, which we saw lots of in the past few days. Response is, their whole goal is saving lives and ensuring, reducing economic impact, and certainly we see this through when we see large-scale disasters with comfort centers, that they are responsible for setting up those pieces to give our community members places to go. And recovery, beyond the emergency period, restoring critical function, financial assistance, rebuilding infrastructure, and certainly in talking to colleagues in West Hans, the repair to infrastructure was really nothing short of incredible, what happened, you know, in the days following those floods. So how does that happen in schools? And this came about in after, so as we were navigating through a difficult time in the summer, when we are not fully staffed at those times, but lots of people come together to support a community and their school, community, when that happens. But there tended to be a lot of misinformation about who was doing what and how families were being supported, and so we looked at our practices and thought, oh, it's really important that we share with our community members what it is that we do when a crisis happens, and how we support our students, and in turn, how we support our families. So shortly after the West Hans in September, we met with Mayor Zabian and EMO Coordinator Shalina Thornton, and talked through kind of what was happening behind the scenes from the school's perspective in supporting the three schools that were directly impacted by the loss of life. And so it was in through those conversations that led us to further conversations about how do we support our communities? In fact, from that conversation, I was able to connect Ms. Thornton with Dr. Mary Schoenfeld, and Dr. Mary Schoenfeld is, I would say, a good friend of mine, but she's also a colleague and a mentor over the past 20 years with regards to crisis response. Dr. Schoenfeld is the American Government's expert on school and community crisis. She's a FEMA instructor and part of the FEMA team in the United States, and so she has dealt with everything from Columbine to Sandy Hook, too. So she is an incredible wealth, and so we've been able to match West Hans folks up with Dr. Schoenfeld and to kind of talk through how do, because she was just, when I had connected with her, she had just been finishing teaching a course with FEMA around how do communities come back from and kind of move forward after a major disaster, and so this was very timely for them. So, so coming back to what we do in schools, we felt it was important that we share this. We kind of went, there's lots of people that come to the table when an event happens, and if we're all in our silos, really not understanding. Ideally, I keep thinking, in this province, it would be so wonderful that we would have a whole provincial response plan that brings to the table all the various partners, that kind of can then kind of look at how crises are kind of mitigated and supported the community in going forward. So within our schools, we spend a lot of effort and time within our schools in the prevention piece, working on social-emotional learning, building positive school culture. All of those pieces help to build resiliency, so when something happens, there's things to fall back on. And so in the preparation, certainly we follow the mandate with regards to occupational health and safety and doing all the required fire drills and lockdown and all those pieces, but we do a lot of work in terms of teaching around that to our students, around why we do those things and how it keeps you safe. When people know about safety, they are then feeling more safe, because then they are able to, in the midst of an event, kind of know that there's some safety nets around them and how that can support them. So that's part of that, and we try and do a job of selling or sharing this information with families and with students. So that's in the preparation component. With our regional crisis team, which we have, we do a lot of work on, A, staying on top of the best practices that are across North America with regards to response, and creating documents, so when a school has, they find out that they have a death of a staff or a student, there's a whole support network of information that they have easy access to from templates for letters to send out to families and those kinds of things. When we're in the response mode, we have strategic plan for those psychological supports, and one of those plans is what we call our circle of impact. And when something happens in a school, we kind of come together and we look at this circle of impact, and we kind of identify, you know, who's at the core, who are the people, and we look at, you know, from a strategic planning, not everyone needs all of the same services at a given time. And so if I was to give an example, if we had, we did a mock debriefing the other day with our team, and we had an incident that happened in a gym where a student fell and broke their neck, and so we were looking at what kinds of services would that school community need, and from the students that were in that space, to the greater community of students in that school, to how to communicate with families, and how do you support the people that were like emergency responders, that were first on site, that were dealing with, and they all need and require different things. When we have a really structured plan, then we know that people will get the services that they need. And then in the recovery part, communication is the critical. I think Dr. Strang and our premier, at the time of COVID, I think we can all remember it was 3 o'clock in the afternoon, we would turn on the radio or the TV to hear what was happening. As we know, communication is fundamental to helping de-escalate and kind of reduce the psychological impact on people, and I think that is a, you know, really great example of how people were given that information. And then other parts of our recovery is a memorialization plan and structure, and I'll share a little bit about that, but those are things. And then after-action review. So when we look at communities, kind of how does, how do we fit into that greater picture of that? And communities are looking at how you build resources, and certainly you have family resource centers and all kinds of things that support your communities, not in the, you know, in the everyday life, right? And those are the things that help to build resiliency in the midst of crisis. And we look at preparation. Certainly, EMO has done some really great work around educational campaigns, in terms of what do you need to do to be prepared? Again, those are, they are a physical response in giving information, but they are a psychological response, because they, again, de-escalate people because they have confidence in that others know what they're doing, and they know what to do in a given situation. So that's the preparation piece, working with partners to determine response. Again, I said my ideal would be to see that we have a community-level response plan that involves not only EMO, but all of the emergency schools, our seniors' homes, and so that when something of a large-scale event happens, that all the partners kind of come together and, and again, not to say that some of that doesn't already happen, but I just know not all partners are part of that. And so training community members in psychological first aid and in mental health first aid. So those two training programs are really helpful in terms of when an incident happens and we open comfort centers. I know there was a call-out for our Schools Plus teams and some local mental health people to go to West Hans when that happened, and those are great supports, but even on the ground, we can do some training, and certainly in BC, this is a very integral part of their crisis response. So you have kind of, when you think of our natural volunteers in our communities, such as our Alliance Club members and our Women's Auxiliary, and people that naturally kind of go, when a crisis happens, how can I help? Well, certainly we know, because that's innate in all of us as to how do we help in an event, and certainly they can, they do often things like bring food and do those kinds of things, but there's other really helpful psychological pieces that they can do, and that is, if trained, they can be onsite in these comfort centers and giving kind of support to people that may not need the expertise of a mental health clinician, we're pulling them out of their client work, but not to say that some of them might need that. So those are just things to kind of think about and consider. And then with regards to recovery, community discussions on memorialization, tending to anniversaries, identifying post-traumatic growth, because I think out of every incident that we encounter, there is always some post-traumatic growth that does happen, and when we see communities come together and rally and are stronger through those kinds of things. And that being said, they're stronger if we have infrastructure around them to support them in a psychological, kind of moving forward from an event. And so if you can flip, I just talked about that circle of impact early, but it's kind of really trying to identify different services for different needs that they have. One of the pieces, and so the next one, and just quickly, just kind of, not all individuals will be equally affected or at all, and so that's the nature of, but recovery is the norm when we're well-prepared, right? And an example of that, in 1989, in Coldenham, New York, there was a tornado that came through a community, and it was in a place that had tornadoes before, and it hasn't had one since. But there were nine children in a school cafeteria from grades one to three that were killed, and a great number of people that were injured. Out of that incident, there was never a collaborative kind of plan as to how people, and there's been lots of kind of research around how that community has been significantly impacted over the years, and divisiveness and people, and at one point in time, I had read some stat that said that half of the community had left because there was so, so much dissension about how the response had. At that, in that same year, here in Canada, in 1989, the month prior, we had the Cormier Village hayride accident, which happened in New Brunswick, and which impacted people here in our community. But out of that, there were 13 people killed and 45 injured. And New Brunswick, after that incident, rallied together and created a whole provincial crisis response plan in which all the partners in each of the zones- in which all the partners in each of the zones, I think they have 18 zones, don't quote me on that. And they come together and they are still functioning in terms of supporting a community and everyone knowing what everyone else is doing after an event happens. So one of the pieces I just wanted to share quickly, and that will kind of bring my presentation to a close. But I wanted to talk a little bit about, and I do have a few copies of these. If you are, if I can, I think there's nine of them. But this is our practice on memorialization. And this is a really critical part to have, that we have conversations with our schools every year around memorialization practices. And it's fundamentally based in equity and making sure that every human that's involved with our school system is respected and treated equally through the loss. And so that's kind of some of the pieces. We have directives around flag lowering. And I know flag lowering, the government of Canada has very stringent kind of guidelines onto what that is. But we know over time in communities, it has come to be seen as a reflection of recognition of someone in our community. And I know in Port Williams, I see the flag down a lot. And it's, you know, I think we've come to believe culturally that it's a show of respect. But one of the pieces that we need to be thinking about is, do we have guidelines about when we lower the flag? And is it lowered for anyone that dies in our community? Is it, you know, and what those pieces look like? And you may have those guidelines to go by. But one of the pieces out of West Hans was there was lots of pressure and requests to lower flags. And so it's really helpful to have these kinds of conversations prior to an event happening, so then people are clear on that. So we don't do memorials in schools. And sometimes that's tough because schools can be the largest place in a community. But one of the pieces that we have to keep schools psychologically safe. And if we're having more and more memorials in schools, then that attachment to what happened in that gym when all these, you know, it makes it so that it's not safe for everyone from a psychological perspective to come back into that space. And so that's kind of a practice that we've kind of adopted. We talk about permanent memorials. And, you know, best practice and most current research is talking about that onsite, we don't have permanent memorials. And that's hard, again, when you're talking with a family in the midst of a crisis about, you know, and if you don't have, if you haven't had those conversations with the staff teams in schools. But it's not to say that there can't be permanent memorials. And so I gave an example, and I've had lots of conversations with Dr. Schoenfeld about Sandy Hook. Sandy Hook had, you know, the disaster of the shooting in the school. What they didn't want was to have the permanent memorial at the school site or where the school was, that they have it in a park and that it's hope-filled. And it has kind of uplifting kind of, she talked locked about the temporary memorial that was formed outside the school after, where there was flowers and teddies and all those kinds of things. You know, one of the beautiful pieces that they did with that was they had various guidelines, which we follow with regards to spontaneous memorials, is that they are there for approximately a week or till the funeral of the deceased. And we communicate that with families to say, this is, you know, going to be here for this time. And what they had done and what we do is that if that is the case, then we'll go to the family and say, before we take it down, would you like to come and see if there's anything that's been placed there that would be important and valuable for you to have? And so we give them opportunities to come. And so in Sandy Hook, they gave the families opportunities to come and choose the things that they wanted. And because it was such a high-profile thing, they blocked it off so people, other people couldn't see what was happening. And then they brought in three big dump trucks. And the first one took all of the compostables. The second one took the things that could be recycled. And then the third one was garbage. And what they did was they used the compostables. So when they built the new garden for Sandy Hook, they used all of that material in the gardens that grew new life. They asked families, my understanding was that they had the compostables, sorry, the recyclables, and they kind of melded them down and were making stepping stones and asking the family to think about a word that best symbolized their child and that those were then put in this beautiful garden, right? So they're life-giving, they're hope-filled. You know, sometimes in best intentions, people kind of want to put something up immediately. We saw that in Port-au-Prince. There was a wonderful gentleman who wanted to create a giant, large, broken heart with the names of the individuals. And so when you look at that, that then stigmatizes that community forever. That it's, again, we're not wanting to not recognize the loss, but to do it in a hope-filled way, that we are rallying together, we're moving together strongly. So these are really valuable conversations that we have in schools and that, you know, really encourage communities to kind of look at. And even things like our temporary road signs or the crosses that are on the roads, kind of what's the guidelines around, how long do they stay? Do they stay till they are broken down? Do they, you know? And so, and kind of looking at what is the psychological impact of that visual on the side of the road to our emergency responders who go by? And to tell you from my work with emergency responders, it's never that that is the only thing. Because if you've worked on an incredibly difficult MVA accident, you will always kind of remember where it is. But that kind of additional kind of attention to that then can bring up other things. And so kind of, you know, having a conversation. I'm not here to stand and say, this is what you must do. But I'm just planting seeds for things to be thinking about in your community. In particular, your temporary memorials. Because what happens if there's no kind of guidelines within a community? Then when do you take it down? And that's the challenging part, right? If we don't go, well, we know this is our practice. And then, and, you know, have seen temporary memorials that have gone on. And then I don't really know if they do, they're a disservice to the family because the flowers are all dead, the stuffies are all soaked and dirty and, you know. And so is that life-giving for a community? And so how do we kind of create policies and guidelines to help us as a community kind of do that psychological support after a disaster and an event? So certainly, one of our challenges, and it's not just for schools, and that is social media. Those pieces are really challenging after a crisis. And so we have some guidelines and try and do things around raising awareness around for students about, is it helpful in the middle of something that's happening for you to be texting your parents and sending pictures? You know, trying to educate around those pieces. We talk a little bit about removal of belongings. So a teacher's private belongings and how do we do that? I had a young student teacher, when I was at Port Williams, say, when she was nine, her best friend died in a car accident. And she came to school the next day and everything was gone. Nothing was spoken of the child and they were just expected to go on. She was with us when we unfortunately had a death of a child in our community through a car accident. And she got to witness the kind of how we embraced the students in that class and kind of talked them through and got them involved in the process of collecting belongings. And what do you think would be helpful for the family? Or they might like to have that special drawing? Or, and helping them kind of acknowledge their loss too. And she just kind of was overcome with her previous grief because she had never had a chance to process that. So we just reinforce that part about how important that is. And so those are just kind of pieces that we go by. We have labeled what are best practices and what are not encouraged. So on school properties, we don't look at things like benches and trees. And we recently had one of our administrators talk about how their mom had died and how there was a garden set up at a school for her. And initially, it gets cared for by people who knew that person. And then over time, it doesn't, kind of, people forget, right? And he spoke about how he and his sister go by that school now. And they, because they don't want it looking in disarray, they kind of take time and clean out the garden. And so that's the piece, is that when we put permanent pieces in, it's like, who in the long term? Because 100 years from now, many people won't know our name. Most people won't. The things that we have are gone. And so, but when we put these pieces in that are long. So we need to find ways to kind of embrace and give people opportunity to share their grief, but also to kind of recognize that person in a way that's life-giving, but that is, you know, through scholarships or pieces, scholarships that last for a set amount of time, you know, so that it is meaningful for both the families and for the people that are supporting. So I think that's the best of memorials that I wanted to just kind of share. And then just kind of going, the need for informal and, it's supposed to be formal, informal psychological supports after disasters in our community. And I read recently from the Nova Scotia Association of Psychologists, they had formed a committee to look at how psychologists can support, which is really awesome in a disaster. But again, it doesn't fit into a larger structure. So then you're kind of getting a mishmash of different kinds of responses happening. Planning for memorials, temporary and permanent, and anticipating anniversaries and milestones events. So, you know, those are the things, not only in schools, but as communities. And so I came to share a little bit about what we do in schools and some of the best practices and kind of encourage you to think about, you know, those pieces of disasters in our communities and how would we respond? And what do we need to think about prior to them happening? Because I can tell you, it's really hard to have those conversations in the midst of it. And it's much more helpful, although it's difficult, you know. We're doing a practice in schools where we're talking about grief in classrooms, in all the classrooms, about, without attached to a particular event and talking about grief and loss and how, what are coping strategies? Because in learning about that, because it's not supper time conversation, it's not something that we want to talk about or often think to talk about with our kids. And when grief and loss happens to us, we try and protect our kids sometimes from that piece. And so trying to just kind of raise awareness of a difficult topic, but something that if it's done well, that our community can be stronger and healthier through it. So that's all I have. Thank you for your time.
Thanks, Mary. Would you be okay to answer any questions if counsel had any?
Absolutely.
Counsel, do you have any questions? We are a smaller group than normal today because we have three counselors who are ill. So we'll start with Counsel Granger.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Thank you for your presentation. I was just wondering how you engage the villages within the municipality. They are closer to their community and they govern themselves. So this kind of information might be really important to take to an individual village. I was just wondering how you do that.
Absolutely. And it's not something that we had really explored prior to the incident in West Hans. I mean, we take care of schools in my other hat that I wear, you know, I'm responsible for the fire service, you know, so those components. But that whole global response, I think, I kept hoping, you know, that we would, certainly we've had more than our share of tragedies in this province. And, you know, I was hoping that there would be, and there could be behind the scenes, things happening. You know, I'm not privy to all those pieces. But something that kind of has a provincial response so then we can get it out to all of our communities, for sure. Counsel Granger, thank you for bringing that up. But we do need to do that, for sure.
Thank you.
Anything further from counsel? I don't see any. I see lots of thinking caps on and maybe some smoke coming out of some ears thinking about what we can do as a municipality moving forward. So thanks, Mary.
You're welcome. Thank you again for the opportunity to come and share. It's something I'm really passionate about. And I feel like we can ignite an interest in this in hopes of taking care of our communities. So, thank you.
Thank you. Yeah, it is important to have these conversations now versus in the moment. So we really appreciate you bringing it to us. And you're welcome to stay for the rest of our meeting if you want, but also don't feel obligated. You're free to leave as well. Okay, so just look for a motion at this time to receive the presentation. Moved by Counsel Killam, seconded by Counsel Granger. Thank you. Any discussion on the motion to receive the presentation? All in favor or otherwise, please signify in the usual fashion. So thank you, Chris, over there in the clerk's chair today. Much appreciated for your work today. The motion carries with seven in favor and three absent. Thank you. Moving to item eight, financial services, we have Mr. Scott McKay with us this morning to chat about street lighting. So welcome to Committee of the Whole this morning, Scott.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor Lutz and counsel. Appreciate the opportunity to be before you this morning. And today I'm here to present a recommendation for decision regarding our bylaw, 45 street lighting bylaw. I know I've been here before to discuss this topic, but hopefully we've made some pretty, proposing some pretty favorable changes for you. So the recommendation is that Committee of the Whole recommend municipal council during its next regular meeting, give first reading to amendments to bylaw 45, street lighting, as attached to the December 19th, 2023 request for decision. So first reading had already been provided by municipal council for changes to the bylaw back in September, but comments received at that time necessitated more investigation by staff. And as a result, substantive changes have been made to that September version of the bylaw, proposed bylaw. Therefore, the process does need to begin again with a new first reading. The changes proposed in this update to the bylaw include the following: a standardized form of application, procedures to be followed relative to applications of new streetlight areas in the municipal growth centers or rural areas of the municipality, and applications related to the addition of streetlights in an existing streetlight serviced area. Authority also is being recommended to be provided to the municipal engineer to add streetlights based on public safety concerns. Proposed changes also include that municipal staff consult with property owners to determine support, that municipal council shall approve the addition of new street lighting charge areas, and that the municipal engineer be provided the authority to add streetlights to existing streetlight-approved areas. As noted in the request for decision, the proposed changes are also intended to create a more responsive process, especially considering issues of public safety and provide consideration for rural area light pollution. Financially, there is no effect to the municipality. Street lighting charges are cost-recovered through the area rate charged to property owners. And that is currently set at $35 this year. Upon approval, all standard procedures of reading, notice, and publication shall be followed as per the Municipal Government Act, Part 7. And this includes a minimum 14 days' notice prior to second reading to provide the public with an opportunity to provide some input. So once again, the recommendation before you today is that Committee of the Whole recommend municipal council during its next regular meeting, give first reading to amendments to bylaw 45, street lighting, as attached to the December 19th, 2023 request for decision. Be happy to answer any questions.
Any questions for Counsel? Counsel Granger?
Thank you, Madam Chair. As you know, I have been asked about street lighting. And just wondering how that fits in with maybe community groups looking for lighting in their... in with maybe community groups looking for lighting in their, by their community center, that kind of thing.
Well, as, as the, the proposed bylaw changes stipulate any, any rate payer in the, in the county, the municipality can make an application to us and it would be presented to the Director of Engineering and Public Works for consideration and for next steps, if you will.
Great, thank you.
Thank you. Counsel Armstrong, your light went on then came off. Okay, perfect. I have no questions. Anything from way down there? No? Okay. I have no further questions at this point. There is, oh, there is a recommendation, okay, but it's, yeah, that we recommend that municipal council during its next read, regular meeting, give first reading to amendments to bylaw 45, street lighting as attached to the December 19th, 2023 request for decision. Move or the motion? Moved by Counselors Allen, seconded by Counselor Davison. Any discussion on the motion? Seeing none, all in favor or otherwise, please signify in usual fashion. Thank you, Mr. McKay.
Thank you very kindly.
Very excited about this new bylaw. Few of us that are excited. And the motion carries with Counsel Killam out of his seat, six in favor. Thank you, counsel. At this point, maybe we'll take a quick break because we're going to move into some presentations. Might be good for everyone to have coffee before we let the CIO have the microphone. Got to give him a hard time before the holidays. Can't help it. Hopefully he comes back after Christmas. Oh, Rob Frost is on first, okay. So yeah, we don't need coffee for Rob. Just kidding. Okay, everyone go grab some coffee. We'll see you in, in 10, 10 minutes. Thank you. But I think we'll, we'll get moving. So Mr. Frost, what a seasonal name you have. Welcome to Committee of the Whole this morning. It's always seasonal, not just, not just this season.
Thank you. Thank you, Deputy Mayor. So today we have a series of presentations and updates to key strategic projects and priorities. I've got a few that I'll be presenting in open session, and I know we've got a couple to present in closed session due to contractual nature. I would point out to counsel, I think the last time we did some of these updates, we used our online strategic plan status. So just remind counsel that that's there for anybody, anytime you want to check on the status of a project. We have been doing a fairly good job of keeping that up to date. So that's there under the government section, strategic plan, and then status plan. So I have three to present to you this morning, which will start with the Greenwich-Wolffel Fire update to the key strategic project. So first of all, just a quick reminder on where we, how we got to where we are. So back in February of 2022, council entered into an agreement with Wolfville and the Fire Commission of the Day in Greenwich to change services within Greenwich and Wolfville Fire districts. About a month later, we had a lot of public consultation and discussion, and we amended that motion and removed the agreement and asked for further discussion on location funding, et cetera. Then last summer, so summer of 2022, the province offered to provide support to us all to work through our discussions and provide mediation services with the municipality and the fire department and the commission of Greenwich. Late in 2022, we came to an agreement on what would be mediated and we met in February of '23 with representation from Kings County, the fire department and the fire commission. And out of that, an agreement was signed as to how we would proceed. The next month or just the end of March, first of April, we had similar discussions with Wolfville and they signed on to the same agreement. So since May 23, so after the agreements were signed and in place, we have had a working group that has been meeting regularly, probably about once a month or a little bit more frequently at times, which has representatives from the Wolfville Fire Department, the Greenwich Fire Department, the Wolfville CAO, Greenwich Fire Commission, and from Kings, it's the CAO and myself. The main discussions that we're having right now are in relation to a transition coordinator for this project and who that could be, and as well as the location of a new fire department. So the next steps are to, are still getting a transition coordinator in place. And just on that note, we have, we've gone out to tender. We didn't get initial response. We did some alternative procurement and we're still working through that process and making some adjustments to that. We have another procurement procedure that's happening right now that will, I think it closes this week. So hopefully by the new year, we will have a transition coordinator in place. Transition coordinator obviously is services to help walk through this entire process. So there'll be support from all kinds of different angles, including HR related, financial related, legal related, that type of thing. And we, we've been working with the parties on location discussions, so that, that work's ongoing. And then we were, we're looking at targeting the, the fiscal year of '25, '26 for start of a new build. So again, it'll take us about a year to walk through the transition, get everything in place, and then hopefully we can proceed with building a new department. So with that, Deputy Mayor, I'm open to any questions that anyone may have.
Any questions on this update so far, presentation? Okay. I have none. All right. Next up is the future business park development, I believe.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor. So the next one is a fairly short one. And this is regarding future business park development in, mainly in the Cambridge-Waterville area. So summary of this project to date, so discussion began in 2020 regarding the new interchange on Highway 101 in the Cambridge Water on Highway 101 in the Cambridge-Waterville area. There's been a lot of meetings since that time between AVFN and the municipality, and we've also had meetings, there's been joint meetings as well, which I'll talk a bit more in a second. So the municipality has an area of land identified as having potential for commercial development or a business park, which is located basically north of where the sewer treatment plant is in Waterville. As you know, the municipality owns a very large chunk of land there where the Kings Regional Rehab Center sits, as well as sewer treatment, and that basically runs right to the highway, so there's a large parcel of land there that could be developed. And the new interchange is basically, the connector road will be coming just to the east of where the Kings Regional Rehab is. So there's, there's been regular meetings of working group since 2021, so this working group includes representation from the Annapolis Valley First Nation, Nova Scotia Department of Public Works, Nova Scotia Business, Inc., Indigenous Services Canada, the municipality, and a few others from time to time. So again, talking about how this project's moving forward, and it's, of course, taken a little bit, but it's a large, large project. The environmental assessment is what has been taking the majority of the last couple of years. We are reaching final sign-off on that, so they've submitted their reports, I think that was back in the summer, they got all their, you know, things that they needed to finalize on that, and they're, and that's ready to be signed off on. And the province is currently completing the design work for the interchange.
Do they have a timeline for that design work? Like, do we know when they aim to be completed?
Yes.
Oh. You mean, I just have to wait till the next slide to have a question answered?
So the design work, the design work is basically done from the province, and again, not to speak on behalf of the province, but we are in that, in that group. And the anticipation is that ground could start moving as early as the spring or summer. But of course, it's a large construction project, and it'll take a couple of years to, to complete. So from our perspect, our perspective in our project on the business park, we really had to wait to see where the environmental assessment landed and do some work with AVFN. So we didn't proceed with anything in '23, '24 fiscal, which was the plan to at least look at what we could do in that area. But we're now in a better position to proceed in '24, '25, because we know the environmental assessment hurdle has been met, and we're ready to start moving on that. We've had a number of other discussions in relation to this parcel. There's certainly some interest already from other groups in the area that are, that are interested in our potential development, so that's a very positive sign. So we're working on design, so we will be working on design and coordination with the Nova Scotia Department of Public Works to coordinate future construction. So as they start to build, we hope to be in a position to start to build, because we will have to build a bit of a road, not a long road, to, to where the, the business park would sit, and of course, develop the business park itself. The intent is that, you know, which, similar to AVFN, that when the interchange is complete and the roads are built, that everything is ready to, to open and to begin, begin use. So with that, Deputy Mayor, I'm open to questions. What do we have?
I have one. Counsel Kilm.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor. Just, just trying to get a handle of where the land is. I think quite, a few years ago, there was a hundred-acre parcel of agricultural land purchased, and I'm wondering if that is part of this project. Not, and I'm not making any assumptions either way here.
Through you, Deputy Mayor, Counsel Kilm. I'm not sure, Counsel Kilm, I mean, it's, it's, it's the same parcel where the Waterville Sewer Treatment Plant sits, so I'm not sure how long we've been in possession of that, I think quite a while, so I'm not sure.
Okay, so it's probably.
It's all, I think it's been municipal land for a very long time.
Okay. I was just, I, I think it was purchased by First Nations, this other parcel that I'm talking about.
Oh, you're, you're referring to Webster's Farm?
I'm talking about.
Oh, on the north side of the highway.
Yeah.
Right. Sorry, I should have brought a map.
That's okay.
That's, that's currently farmland.
Yes.
Now, the connector road on the north side will, because there's going to be a connector road on the north side that goes to Brooklyn Street, that will run on that land that they purchased.
Okay, now I know where I'm in. Thank you.
Counsel Armstrong.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor. Our responsibility in setting up a future business park in this particular area would be to put in roads and sewer. That would have to be our responsibility financially?
Through you, Deputy Mayor, to Counsel Armstrong, that's one of the things that we need to determine. So we know we have the land, we know that there's potential to develop it. Exactly how we do that, that's something we need to decide, so that'll be something that we'll have to come back to council at a future date. It could be that we either build the roads, put in the water and sewer, and sell lots, or it could be that we speak with someone that would be willing to do that on, you know, and that they would develop it, so that's the other side of things.
So we would sell it, and somebody else would develop it as a business park?
Or, or a kind of a bunch of options in between that, so there's other partnership options and that type of thing.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you. Any further questions on the business park? Seeing none, we can move to the regional recreation complex.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor. So again, some of this council would have seen probably in the presentation that was received with joint councils, but there is a few things that we can certainly update on where we are, and again, another large project that will take some time to get to more action. So just a reminder of the project to date, so in the spring of 2021, the partners agreed to proceed with a study to look at feasibility of a regional recreation complex. So that summer and fall, we put out a request for proposals, we hired Sierra Planning and Management and with some of their partners, and proceeded with that study. The study occurred over that fall and the next winter, so winter of 2022. We received the final report in summer 2022. Excuse me? The draft report was received by the working group, and then the full draft report, including the site information, was presented in camera to all three party, partnering municipal units, so that was about a year ago, a little more than a year ago, I believe it was in October. So in November 2022, the three partner municipalities, so us and the town of Woolville and town of Kentville, agreed to proceed to further investigation, consultation, and discussion on this project. In March of '23, there was a presentation to joint council to receive the public version of the feasibility report with the location information removed, and of course, that was just so that the public, the document could be made public. In April and June of '23, there was meetings with primary landowners, so the CAO and myself have met with some of the landowners that were mentioned in the private portion of the feasibility study. And in this interim phase, what we're, we call kind of Phase 1.5, it's kind of a gathering information and getting additional information that we've needed before we feel we can make decisions, which of course, land is, is a big component of that. We've also talked to a lot of other municipalities or organizations that own and operate facilities such as this to get some of their own input and guidance. We've had general discussions with other levels of government, so certainly knowing that this is a very large project and will cost a lot of money, we'd be looking for support from the provincial and federal levels of government, and we've had, again, pretty preliminary discussions on that, but have, have at least received some interest from other levels. In this fall, we've been working on drafting an IMSA for discussion, and we met with the working group who've asked for some specific, specific information on the land, and again, we're awaiting responses to some of these questions from the people that we've been talking through. So the location considerations that have to be considered, again, as we mentioned, the CAO and myself have been having conversations with the owners of these parcels. The how funding is, what funding we may be eligible for may depend on ownership, so again, there's lots of different possibilities as to how we might be able to proceed with the regional recreation complex, but certainly, ownership of land may be something that we need to consider, and whether or not we have to own it, or whether there's other options for development. The other thing that we're always conscious of is additional local development and the potential for housing in the area and that type of thing, and, and what such a facility would do to the area. The operations and governance has been a regular discussion with our working group, so again, operating and governance scenarios from the report include an intermunicipal service agreement, which you're all familiar with, a non-arms-length municipal agency operation, so again, having another organization operate, but still connected to the municipality. And then there's private-public not-for-profit partnerships are another model that has been used even in the province as well. The, some of the governance discussions, some of the recommendations that we've received from the other groups and facilities that we've talked to is to keep it municipally-owned and operated, or at least have an operating agreement with an entity. There was discussion that, again, there is some, some of these facilities that are basically owned and operated by a community board, and that that can be problematic, because there can be a bit of a loss of control from the municipality perspective. Some of the next steps for this project include a decision on an operating model, so we're probably a couple of months behind on this particular portion due to, due to some of the delays on the land discussion. So we're looking at, hopefully, having this in place now will be early 2024. We've talked about a possible expression of interest on partnership or land expression of interest, again, that's, again, dependent on some of the discussions that we're having with the property owners specifically. And then hopefully, that we can get back in front of the three councils, probably in spring of 2024, so that there's some additional decisions that can be made, including governance, land, and funding models, and proceeding or not. So future estimated timelines, so again, public engagement, there still needs to be another component of public engagement. We have worked a little bit with one of the original community groups that had been advocating for this, and they have been gathering some of their own information, but once some further decisions are made, or we have more information to make further decisions, there'll, there'll be another round of public discussion. Again, I mentioned municipal units, we hope to have decisions in front of council or, or decisions for council in spring of this coming year. And then, of course, you look at a design build, bid, build, or design-build RFPs would need to be developed, which usually would take about a year for the size of a project or more, and then award a contract, and then construction, again, would take a couple of years, so, which puts us somewhere in probably 2028 or 2029. So certainly, from the get-go, we've, we've estimated that this was a five- or seven-year project, and we're about two years into it, so we're more or less on track. And with that, Deputy Mayor, I would be open for any questions that anyone may have.
Any questions from council? Counsel Armstrong.
Is there any estimate based on the information that we have right now? I think there were some numbers tossed around when we first started talking about this, as to how much this is going to cost?
Through you, Deputy Mayor, certainly. So the report, the report identified what we've been looking at as a rec complex, which would include a aquatics component as well as a gymnasium, and that was $58 million. The, just a reminder that the councils agreed to proceed with a minimum of 50% external funding, so saying that, you know, the three councils involved wouldn't proceed unless we could get at least 50% funding from the provincial and federal government. And there is certainly cases where that has, you know, it's been potential to get up to 66%, in some cases, a third, and a third, and a third, as, as you've heard before. So, but, you know, lots of things to keep in mind, this is a moving target. The, the report is now two years old, just about. We all know that instruction, construction costs have, have increased this past year, so, you know, when we get to the final decision point, that number will need to be adjusted. With, one thing that we're looking at now, of course, is the land discussion, because that's usually not included in any funding model, or any cost-sharing model, so we have to figure out what that would look like and add that to the top. So, you know, we're certainly in the $60 million range for such a facility, with the understanding that we'd be looking to get as much external funding as possible, and then we'd have to look at the breakdown of what that means between the municipalities.
And the last time, when was the last time that there was a discussion between the three possible partners? Kempe-Woolville here?
March, I think, wasn't it?
So that was March.
See, Deputy Mayor, it's been less than a year, about eight months ago.
Eight months?
Yep.
Yeah. I, I'm having a hard time with the climate that we're in right now, and to try and justify even a 50% outlay of money for this kind of a project. I have a real hard time with it. I guess we'll just have to wait and see. Thank you.
Counsel Kilm.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor. Through you to Rob. As we all know, there's municipal elections coming up in the fall of next year. What impact may that have on this project if, if there's a change of attitude on this? I know it's hard to predict, but.
It's kind of a crystal ball in his pocket.
Through you, Deputy Mayor, I'll prefer not to put my comment into political, the political.
That's fine, I just was thinking it may not run as smooth as maybe it could be.
Thanks, Counselor. Anything further from council? Counsel Davison.
Sorry about that, I was just typing, trying to get my questions in order. It's a huge cost. I actually didn't know it was that much until CAO had just explained it was like $60 million, that's a crazy amount. Lately, I have been getting quite a few emails on this. There are organizations that do want to support this project. In the future, are we going to potentially look at getting funding from corporations? Cell phone companies, grocery stores, Michelin, any, anybody in particular that have expressed, expressed interest in being a part of this project?
Through you, Deputy Mayor, Counsel Davison, that would certainly be a discussion that we would have moving forward. Lots of, lots of facilities like this, you know, when they get to a certain point, they look at naming rights, that's one of the, one of the ways. I know in Picto County, there was support from a large company there, so those are certainly things that we would look at, but until we get to a point where the decision has been made to proceed, it's hard to go out and talk to companies.
Go ahead.
Just one further question. Again, with, with the plethora of emails about this recreation center, I have had some developers also, I've discussed it in the last week or so with them, that if there was something like this to come into the valley, that they would certainly entertain the fact of putting up a hotel or hotels. I know other areas have done that. So I know it's a, it's a huge expense, but, I mean, I would certainly be in favor, having children, to have a place to go, and just, just to let council know that I have had developers certainly want to reach out to us and, and let us know that they're, you know, they would certainly, they would certainly be involved in putting more infrastructure here in the valley if there was something that we had for everybody to use. So just a comment I wanted to put out there for the people that have already messaged me about.
Thanks, Counselor. We'll always take support of any kind, particularly financial, maybe. Okay. That's it for Mr. Frost, I believe. Okay, so just looking for a motion to receive. The KSP update presentations for information moved by Counsel Meisner, seconded by Counsel Kilm. Discussion? Seeing none. Discussion, seeing none, all in favor, or otherwise, please signify now. We have a few more presentations, as was indicated, for the in-camera portion of this meeting. The motion carries unanimously, thank you. Are there any board and committee reports to be presented at this meeting? And none from external, I'm assuming? Okay. We have two items of correspondence attached to our agenda. The Kings County Firefighters Association regarding the carbon tax, which is in your agenda package on page 36, as well as the town of Oxford exemption of volunteer emergency service providers for new fuel charges, similar issues on page 37. Could I have a motion to receive the correspondence, moved by Counsel Granger, seconded by Counsel Meisner. Discussion on the motion. Seeing none, all in favor, or otherwise, please signify now. The motion carries unanimously, thank you, council. Is there any other business? Counsel Granger.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor. I probably should have asked this before we voted on the last thing, the correspondence. I, I'm hoping that we're planning on responding to that. It's a pretty important piece of correspondence, and we didn't say if we were going to respond or not?
Yeah. We generally consider them, and then, I mean, although we did receive this quite some time ago, actually, this one was from November 27th. We can put together, we will respond, right? Look to our CAO. We'll talk about it, and we'll respond. Yeah?
Great, thank you.
And if there's anything that needs council's consideration, we'll come back to you. Okay, cool. Okay. Other business? No other business? We have no public with us today. At this point, I'll look for a motion to adjourn to move into closed session. I don't anticipate we will come back. So I will just say at this point, happy holidays to everybody listening, enjoy a wonderful season, and I hope you spend some time with friends, family, and community. All right. Motion to move in closed camera, closed session. Counsel Kilim. Counsel Granger. Thank you. Discussion on the motion to adjourn into the closed session. Seeing none, all in favor, or otherwise, please signify now. And wishing a speedy recovery for our colleagues who, who are ill today. Hope they get better soon. Motion carries, we are moving into camera. Thank you.